Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Bryan Beck zoning board of appeals meeting for October 15th, 2025. And first, I just note that we have four members present, so we have a quorum, and we can continue with business. Next, we have the approval of the September 17 minutes, and they were sent to everybody, did everybody have an opportunity to review them? I did not do a thorough analysis, but going through them, it looked pretty good to me. I didn't see anything that, any clarity or missions.
They seem to rank up, okay?
Yeah, they did.
Kim, you're usually pretty...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion that we accept the draft zoning board of appeals minutes for September 17th, 2025 as presented. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, approved. All righty. So, we have three new applications on, and then three public hearings, and then old business. So, the first matter that is on for this evening is the case of Justin McCleod. Is that the connection?
Yeah.
Okay. It's case number 1076, 531 Old Ortonburg Road. And please state your name, and just basically briefly, have you been through the process before? Okay, so, but just take us through the process. We're gonna obviously just see if the application is complete enough for us to accept it. If so, we'll accept, we'll probably be subject to renderings, which I always need renderings, but, and then set up a public hearing. So, please, take it away. You got a camera over there, and give him the point, too. We're very high-tech here, so.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carl Hansen. I'm an architect and project manager at the Art Building, representing our clients and the clouds, the properties of the, uh, the owners of the property. What we are proposing here is, we have a site at 531 Old Ortonburg Road. It is a historic site, part of the original Mark Hart Farm property. And on this site, we have a historic home, which is located right here. Well, this is the main area here, where we have most of the work, and then a blow-up of that area. Number one is the existing historic home on the site, that is 2,999 square feet. Item number two right there, the dark shaded, is an existing addition that was built in the 90s. And then the little grouping of buildings next to it are some existing historic barns that we previously renovated on a previous project. So, I think most of you are fairly familiar with the project, but take it a little further. So, this project now is proposing to demolish the existing 90s addition, and do a new addition that's a little more sensitive to the historic context, and renovate the existing historic home. The new addition will, has about 706 square foot footprint, but total square footage added is, I think, 3,300, right around that number. Now, the big question, and why we were brought to the zoning board, is that during a previous design, the planning board had indicated that we were encroaching our 100-foot setback to Shelt Hill Road to the north. And since then, we've actually taken that feedback and moved the footprint of the addition back to outside of that. So, now, the only encroachment we have that brings us to you are three light wells that do project into the 100-foot setback. They project in three feet, and they are 15 feet wide each, so we have a total of 45 square feet that are encroaching in the space. However, these are light wells for the basement, so they are not above grade, they're fully subterranean.
I'm sorry, can you, light wells?
Yeah, like, in a basement, you might have like a little carved-out section in the ground that allows you to get a window in, into the basement. So, it has a lower section of grade right there next to the window to allow you to get a window down that's below grade.
And that's why I mentioned renderings, which is always, you know, comes up. We need to see what it's gonna look like, you know, what, what... I know visually, I've seen them before, but what are they gonna look like in this project? So, if you can give us renderings of, showing us that, that would be great.
I understand.
Did you say that light wells are 15 feet?
Uh...
Each one?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, they're five feet wide each.
Okay.
Five by three is 15 each, 45 total. That's, sorry about that.
Yeah.
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 So, I can show you a little, as we, if we click through a little further here, I can show you a little, as we get into the house plans, that we wanna keep on a little bit. So, here, this is the existing, I understand. So, here's the, some existing photographs, I'm not sure why this is so late, but... This is as it sits today. Yep. And this is the, the back addition now that we'll be removing. And then, if we go into the next slide... There we go. So, this is the existing now. So, this is the historic home here, planned south. And then, the 90s addition is above it here, which is technically the east. And that's what we'll be removing. And then, if we go to the next slide... So, existing elevations right now, the separating red line indicating what, the, you know, original home, the original historic home with the 90s additions on the other side. And then, if we go to the next, so this is the planned addition now. So, we leave and renovate the existing historic home, and then, this is the basement area. So, our building line is now, the edge of the actual addition is outside of the 100-foot setback. But these three little light wells, which are basically like additions to the basement and allow you to get a window in, those are the items that are encroached. They're three feet out by five feet wide each. And if we go to the next slide...
What if, what if they come up like four inches above ground or something?
Exactly. You would only see a, 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 four to six, you know, about six inches worth of stone veneer above grade. Otherwise, they would be not visible on the front street or anything else. So, they have no visual impact from that elevation.
So, I'm sorry, so how far are you encroaching?
These are encroaching three feet out.
That's what I was saying.
Three feet.
Top.
Yes.
Yeah, the variance request is the outlandish amount of three feet, six inches.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, the ZEO's determination letter said three feet, six inches. I know you were saying three, so is it...
I, it should just be three feet, yes. So, the big question we have for you here, even though we were brought here, since we've adjusted the building footprint to be outside of the 100-foot setback, and these are the only encroachment, we wanna ask the question, do we actually need a variance at this point, given this adjustment? And our rationale for that is that, per the verbiage of the zoning code, section 125-26A, architectural features permitted in required yards, ordinary projections of windowsills, belt courses, cornices, eaves, and other architectural features, provided however that such features shall not project more than three feet in any required yard. So, we gave ourselves a limit of three feet, that's why that should be.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was checking, but I remember you raised that in your application.
Yeah.
But then I saw the determination letter, I was like, oh, oh, maybe they're outside of that.
And we discussed it, and you discussed that before, any concerns?
Uh, well, I, I reached out to Gretchen, I talked to Gretchen today, and I got the determination letter. And I, when I read three feet, six inches, I assumed that it might be outside of that. So, I haven't spoken to Brian about his determination letter. Because we have a new one, I assumed he had reviewed your newest plans. So, it seems that Brian is still suggesting that they, that they need a variance. Of course, you are the zoning board of appeals, and you can interpret the zoning law for a reason. That is one of your duties, and you can do it. I have not looked closely at this, I just kind of read the, read the text of it.
Yeah, I think we're still gonna be delving into whether you actually need a variance or not. We understand that. But we, we discussed it yesterday, and we need it some more clarity, so we may not. But I think we should probably just go forward and send it to public hearing. I'd like to see renderings and what have you, just on those items, and...
I think the renderings might ask a lot of, or like, answer a lot of questions.
Yeah, they could. So, and it may be six inches off. I know that the request is three feet, six inches. If you read his provisions, three feet, so it's, I, anyway.
Why was it 36 initially?
Uh, that would have just been probably a mistype, or based on the previous design, where the house actually projected beyond the 100-foot setback. So, when we realized that, A, we were not taking, we're not taking too much away from the design, and just pulled the house limits back to outside of the 100-foot setback, we felt like the light wells could go to three feet. I believe that should just be a mistype, because we know that that, that basically that requirement exists, and...
I gotta ask, maybe could you just do the wells two feet?
Well, you're still with three feet, and you get rid of the six inches, that's the...
Yeah.
36 or whatever?
Well, I think it's still a question of if it match, if it's, if it would be considered an architectural feature, that's, that's one of the main questions.
I mean, we can have the, the distance requirements, or the three foot, we can stay within that, basically, that's not a problem, and that's what we're proposing to do. The question is whether you consider it falling under this section as qualifying as a, just an architectural feature that is allowed by the correctional boundary.
What were you gonna ask?
I don't think we've ever had this issue, but you're talking about windowsills and...
I mean, you know, I also, I mean, you know, I mean, the windowsill is something that's more of like an addition on to the house, it's not really part of the actual architecture. Maybe if we see the renders, it might help answer the question, if it's really, is it, so is it part of the structure at all, or is it? I mean, I guess it has to be somewhat part of the structure.
It is. It's effectively like a basement wall that goes down the ground, but then it's open air at the top, so if there's a window below, which is not seen above grade.
Does the foundation really go under it, or is it just, I'm thinking of it as like in New York City, when you're walking along, they usually have grates over them, but there's a...
Effectively, it would be like that, yes. And we could put a cover over it to keep snow from getting in, or breathe, that's common. You'll often see them on houses where it's like a, like a half culvert, they'll often use that. That, that's what we're talking about here. We just be constructing it on concrete instead.
We're, we're not asking to put a cover over it.
No, no.
No, no, I have to describe.
I, yeah.
But, I think this is certain...
Who determines whether it's an architectural?
You do.
We do.
Yep. I can, I can reach out to Brian to get his insight. You didn't address it in the determination letter.
Has, where?
And I can, you know, I can try to do a little bit of research.
Well, that's what I've been suggesting.
And provide you guys, but as I said, as a zoning board of appeals, one of your obligations and duties is to interpret the zoning laws. You can interpret the zoning law. Of course, just remember, of course, you do have precedent with your decisions for similarly situated applicants. So, just keep that in mind.
So, I, what you're saying is we just have to research it a little bit more.
She, Kim will provide us with research. We'll get some renderings, and that'll kind of help us.
But I think what Scott is suggesting is that we continue with it as if an air marries is needed, so that in case an air marries is needed, we're not holding the applicant up any, and we're not...
Is there a way that we could get that determination before, because of, we're scheduling a public hearing, have you had to send out notifications? And all that, it would be nice to be clarity before...
And if it's determined to fall under the category, then the variance isn't required, we don't need a public hearing, correct?
Right.
Correct, but it does take time to...
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out to Gretchen, see what that timeframe is, we'll try to work with, see, see when you need the...
They'd have to go out November 7th.
November 7th, okay. I'll see, I'll see if I can...
Make it priority to do a little research.
There's a single point, not, to try not to have it go to that, we don't have to, that's my...
No, absolutely.
So, I know you requested renderings.
I would like to see renderings.
I think renderings would still be helpful.
Yeah.
Sure, but I can also point out in the, in the previous slide, the elevation, or the next slide, the elevations.
Right, and those are great things, but I like to see color in what it's gonna look like on the property, et cetera. That we asked of every applicant. I'm sure we asked that, create color of the buildings.
Well, this is...
And, and the structure, I mean, they're gonna be, they're gonna be stone, or they're gonna match the...
They, they would match the foundation wall, the stone veneer, but this is the elevation here. You won't, if you go a couple more slides, it should have the blown-up more elevation. This is it here.
Yeah.
Oh, so this effectively shows, you would see the tops of them, which are projecting in three feet. But the window behind is actually on the building wall, and that's what you see, and it's not encroaching. So, I mean, I'm not sure how much more the rendering would show, because this is all subterranean.
Probably show it from, like, certainly from like the side, like maybe just like a, like if you were standing on the ground, and you were looking.
So, are you thinking more like a, a three, like a perspective?
Yeah, perspective.
But again, so when you're building, and the wall actually goes out?
Yes, this, this bit of wall that you can see right here, this low section, each one of these, that is what steps out three feet in, and is the encroaching. So, probably at minimum of upgrade, you want like six inches at the low point, and as the grade falls away, it gets a little bit more visible. But it's very minimal in terms of visual impact, and, you know, that's what we're arguing. We feel that it is an architectural feature that has minimal impact to the setback and the visual from Shelt Hill Road.
And we, we may agree with you once we go to more...
You said this is called, if you, you, you say it's called a light well? I just wanna make sure that I've researched.
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a light well. It's effectively just a, it's a window into the basement, right? But you gotta create, you gotta get the grade away, so you have a window that's deeper.
And normally, it's an oval, and you're doing squares?
We're doing squares, because this is all new addition, so it's, you know, permanent and durable for us to do that out of concrete while we're building the foundation itself for the addition.
Questions, concerns? I think we know what we have to do, and we need to know what you're providing for us. So, at this point, the application is, we're waiting for us to accept it, so I'm making mention that we accept. The application's subject to receiving the rendering, and let's just ask a second, okay? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're gonna send a public hearing for... November what?
19.
November 19th. Okay, in the interim, what we will do is do a little research, we'll get those renderings, and if we determine, you know, that there are no variance needed, we'll let you know, and of course, we'll cancel the public hearing. If we feel we have to go forward on the update, then we'll let you know that as well.
We have one last question.
The window, the furthest to the right there, does that show the actual height of the whole window? So, the windows are not super deep, the wells are not very deep?
Yes, correct. They're not as deep as the full basement.
They're really just deep enough to allow you to get the windowsill, to the bottom of this windowsill, plus a little bit, because you don't, first you don't build up or whatever else.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that, yes, that dash line is the bottom of the, of that window, so that's the largest window.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll see on the 19th. All right, so we have some housekeeping. I know Kim looking at the cheat sheet here. I'm a seeker. I think we, I probably can just hold off on that for the time being, because as you suggested, the planning board may be involved.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, Gretchen said that they should be in front of the planning board on November 3rd, I believe. So, if, if that's the case, then the planning board would like to be doing it.
And especially if we don't, if we're not even involved, it's certainly, you know, we agree with their interpretation. And that they don't need a variance, then we should be involved in that process.
Yes, agreed.
So, we doesn't, planning board. Okay, referrals just to the...
Just to the Bryan Beck planning board?
Right, and...
And I think that's it?
That's it, and I think Karen volunteered yesterday to be the one person. No, it's, it's an interesting issue, I've, I've never seen it, it's something, so, we're just gonna see something new. All right, the next matter is case number 1090, Jean-Michel. Is there somebody here for that? Ah-ha.
Ah, it's high.
Yes. I did take a French...
Somewhat high, anyway.
So, you've been through this process before, so you know what to do, just...
Successfully avoiding it for years, but I, I like when it's at Bryan Beck, though. It's nice to see everybody.
So, just take us through the, I mean, it's a fairly simple application, but just take us through the application, and you do have the little, I mean, there are pointers that you can utilize.
I think I need that or you changed something.
Got it.
It gives you a brief little...
Yeah, just let us, just take your name, and for the record, you are on TV, and let us know what you wanted to understand.
Jordan Baldina, Synergy Design Architecture, representing Michelle's, 63 South Mary Turnpike, here in Bryan Beck. So, the proposed project is a two-foot addition to their existing front porch with deck. The entire, much of the entire building is in the setbacks, because this is a pre-existing non-conforming lot in the zoning district that requires significantly larger, when, uh, minimum property size of five acres. This property is 0.4 acres, so expanding in any direction is, is encroaching in setbacks. So, the required front yard setback is 100 feet. The current setback, existing, is about 51 foot nine inches, approximately. So, we're proposing to reduce that to actually only 49 feet.
49 or 47?
Yeah, I'm sorry, 47, yeah, yeah, 47 feet, thank you. Um, so, and, and that is because there's a stair coming down from the porch. So, it's two feet of additional porch area and then the steps. That is the nature of the project and proposal, and what we were requesting a variance for.
Right, so it was a front and a side yard setback?
Uh, yes, because the, again, the house is in the side yard.
And the side yard would be 38.67, because required is 15.
Right, there's no change to the proposed non-conformity of work, yeah, but it's working in the side yards, yes.
Yeah, but because you're changing it, why not change it?
Are you demolishing the existing deck?
No, it's removing the decking and adding to it.
Okay. So, then I'm wondering if the side yard, if you're not...
I don't know, if they're not demolishing it, then I don't believe it's required.
Yeah, I'm asking, gonna ask Ken the same question.
Yeah, I was just going off of Brian's, so one of the things, Brian's determination letter, Brian, can't, the determination letter, he said that the side yard setback was 38.67?
On the left side, yeah, I believe so.
Oh, on the left side, oh, I see.
Yeah, we got two...
Oh, okay, I was looking at the other, so, so that's...
Well, maybe, because if you're not demolishing it...
But, but this is 39.67, so I guess...
Oh, that should be accurate. 39.67 is...
Okay, so, so 38 is not accurate?
Hmm, no, I'm not sure where that number's from.
Okay.
What's the difference between demolishing it and removing it?
Well, it's not, it doesn't sound like they're removing it.
Well, he's, Jordan said they were...
I mean, the reason again, section areas is that they're, they're expanding.
You're removing.
Oh, I said decking, the surface of the deck to re, yeah, resurface it. The structure of the deck exists and is to remain.
So, the foundation, the foundation of the deck is, is not being touched?
Correct. We're adding new foundation, because we're holding something that's sticking out two feet. But the existing deck's foundation is untouched.
And it's just all the, the hatched area is what's being added, correct?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
So, you may only need one variant.
Yeah, I'll double check, I'll, I'll...
We'll check that, and better to apply, generally than not enough.
I'm sorry, I see where the, we wrote 38.67. I, I forget, that was my language.
Oh, okay.
And I'll clarify if that's an error, or if that's an error.
Okay, okay.
Something is, is off.
Okay, but you're not, you're not changing it, correct?
Yep.
Okay, I'll double check that, because I'm wondering if you're still adding into it. I guess you probably wouldn't really need a variance, because your variance really just goes to the closest point, and it looks like it's actually slanted a little bit.
That's, that's the question. It might be changing a little on the left side, and I apologize for the lack of clarity around this. It might be resulting in reducing, because there is a bit of an angle, a skew.
Yeah, but it seems like, it seems like 39...
It does.
Would be closer than...
It does.
So, yeah, if you could just verify that, just so... Because we wanna make sure that if you need a variance...
Of course.
The board considers it.
Yeah.
Uh, what I would like is renderings. This is gonna look like, what's the, and first of all, having photographs of, of what appears now would be nice. And then, what is being proposed will be nice as well. I mean, I know this is not a, a big change.
Right.
And, and I appreciate that, but we always like to know if we're looking at photographs or wonderful renderings or wonderful stuff.
For renderings, because it's a cost question for the client, so the 3D pretty pictures are, are more than how I'd normally draw it in 2D, in black and white. So, if, if the 2D, you know, you can see elevations from the front and the sides in plan view. The 3D rendering, which I can do, is just a little bit more, if, if...
It's color.
Color, shading, I think it would get more oozing us.
Yeah. So, that's what we usually ask for.
Okay.
So, just, since we were talking about the expand, you know, that slight, you know, tilt of it.
Yes.
Is there like a tilt here for...
Yeah.
So, is there like maybe a tilt here? That's maybe, is that maybe with like 38?
No.
Okay.
No, something's out of sorts, and I'll resolve it. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, yes, but I don't know what it is.
May I just ask, too, the, the shading on the right?
Mm-hmm.
If you're, I assume that on the left is the new stairs and the two feet, on the right, it looks...
This is the new stair.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is because this is getting assisted onto that existing structure. There's, there is already structure there. But we need to do work in it, in that hatched area.
Okay.
So, it is new constructions to be...
That's not the...
Of deck.
Right.
Just out of curiosity, how did you get here? Did you apply for a building permit? And then you, they said, oh, or whatever?
So, I'm, go back to when I would figure out the application process, we submit, and that's what we do. And of course, now it goes to the ZEO. So, we knew everything we would have to do, and we submitted everything, all the paperwork, under a building permit, because that's how they asked you to do it now, and then we got predictably directed here, as we knew we would, yeah. Thought we knew we would, yeah.
Not digital processing?
Yeah, it's more, it's more, it's more official and streamlined now than it used to, that's all.
Questions, concerns? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the application subject to receiving photographs of what is actually doing now, and renderings of what is to be.
Got it.
All right, do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, can you be here on November 19th, which is one of your public hearings?
Yeah, I can.
All right, so, the people are ready, we do know the time, and we go to the second field, basically.
Very good, thank you.
I'm really forward to seeing you and getting those regular, we need the renderings and the photographs, probably.
At least two weeks, at least two weeks, or more.
Got it. All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
You too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. All right, some housekeeping, looking at the cheat sheet. Kim recommends that we consider this application to be a type two. Under seeker, under 617, 45 C12, construction expansion, replacement of minor accessory pertinent, residential structures including garages, carports, patios, decks, et cetera, which seems appropriate. So, I make a motion that we accept the application deemed to be a type two, action number seeker, under 617, 45 C12. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
The first time we don't get a uniform vote.
I was like, whoa, the, the newbie is, is causing trouble already. Anyway, so it's... Anyway, so it's just referral to the planning board. Which one do you find gentleman would like to take this one?
The stairs, six-two feet.
Okay, and the third and final new application is case number 1091, Honeybee Childcare. Is there somebody here for that?
Yes.
Come on up. And you've seen the process, so please state your name.
Sure.
And tell us what you want to do. Before you even get going, is that in place or are you?
We did the Honeybee daycare project. We installed the awning, then they came out to inspect it, and the building had too many signs on it, they didn't have permits for it.
I was going to say, that's a hell of a rent.
So we removed the sign until we can get permission to put it back.
So it's not there, but that's what it looks like, that's what it looked like before you took it down.
Right, we had it up for two weeks, ran a final inspection, all you need, special permits because there's little signs in the building, didn't have variances. We took it back down, and that was when you put it back down.
Were you asked to take it down?
Yes. But the building didn't have permits for all the other signs, so they cleared that first.
Some day cares.
Yes. First job, go to your center.
It seems a bit drachomaniacal, but anyways, it's done, it's done. All right, so your application basically is to.
Restore.
Restore the sign.
Right.
I think you can comprehend this one, this is.
Yeah.
All right, and there are two variances that are required?
Yeah, so as it was stated, that, you know, as you are all aware, the sign regulations are restrictive, especially the residential district. So it's, and this is on the arch care facility, the ones that were just in front of us. So because they're all the same property, all the signs amount to this, the aggregate figure. So anyway, so they're asking, the awning measures 32 square feet. And because they've already had variances above the eight square feet just by arch care alone. They need a variance of 32 square feet for this awning and then one additional sign because they're only permitted one sign for non-residential use.
How's that sign committee go?
Wait, I'm the one who's blocking. It's not up to me, I believe recommendations are going to be made. And then once those recommendations are made, they'll be to the town boards, and it's up to the town boards to change the zoning laws so that we don't have to deal with this.
Squad.
Yes, it'll probably take a few years.
And then, interim?
In the interim, we deal with this.
Yeah.
I don't have any questions, so if you'd be.
No.
I just need the name for the record.
Oh, yes.
George Lambert. Hey, George.
Questions, concerns? No, okay, I make a motion that we accept the application, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And I was going to say, Brian, you seem passionate about this. Why don't you take it, all right? So what will happen now is that you accept the application. I don't need anything more from you, like I said, I figured that was in place, but unfortunately.
So do you need to file a building permit to restore it and get inspected?
Have you already, have you already applied for a sign permit? You mustn't, because that's how it got to possibly.
I assume, it was on with the whole project, it was on with the premiere of the project, it was the whole renovation, the daycare center. And that was included in the project from the beginning. But then, right here after inspection, you saw the signs.
I want to just double check with building department. I'm assuming since it's in front of the ZBA, they probably have it, but just to make sure that there's no other purposes.
But we do have to go through this process, so are you available on November 19th?
I am.
Oh, yes, seven o'clock, it'll be staggered, it'll probably be done at a certain time. But what will happen is you just come up and basically state the same thing you stated today. And that would be it.
Okay, in the interim, are we able to check and pass building permit, put it up?
You have to wait for the variance at this point, I think, it'll probably be, I feel badly, and so does Richard. Typically, typically, things are not taken down, they're just left in place for our blessing, or not blessing, and they're taken down, but usually.
But it's not uncommon for something to be asked to be removed, so I don't think it was maliciously done, I think.
Oh, no, I'm not saying it was maliciously done.
But actually, I think it's, you know, it makes sense, you know, something's not supposed to be up. If it can be, I think it's like, if it can be removed, you can.
I think it makes sense if you're on Route 9 or in another place where you have neighbors and stuff like that. This is tucked away somewhere nobody seems to will accept, except who's going to be here. So I don't think that was a reasonable.
In my experience, more often than not, it's just kept in place until it's ruled.
Yeah.
That's what I see, but what's happened has happened, so, you know, we'll go through the process and it'll get taken care of. So thank you very much for.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll see you in November 19th. Kim, see you.
Yeah, I want to just discuss that, that Brian was just wondering, because it's pretty standard, the fact you guys are just out to permit anyway. If you want, do some initial discussions and then we can maybe have a resolution prepared at the next meeting?
That'd be fine.
Yeah.
Because like I said, you were just out on the other, you're familiar with the property.
Oh, yeah.
And we have the picture here, so anyway, it's up to you how you want it.
No, that's fine, I like that. So according to Kim's cheat sheet to me, she suggests that this matter be deemed a type two matter under secret, under 617.522. Installation of traffic control devices on the state of the streets, frozen highways. This also includes some fees. Sounds reasonable, so I'll make a motion that we deem this to be a type two action for secret, under section 617.522. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, referral to the planning board. And then, Kim, you have down the Duchess County Planning Board?
Yes, so it's also of Duchess County, so it's the Town Planning Board and Duchess County Planning Board because it's a non-residential use. So that's why it has to be reported Duchess County as well.
And it's also, does that have anything to do with the railways in the area as well?
Yes, so if it's, so under section, General Municipal Law 239M. If a project requires either variance site plan, special use permit, or subdivision approvals, and is within 500 feet of a state or county road. It needs to be referred to Duchess County Planning Board for their comment. Sometimes the towns such as Ryne Bank has an MOU or memorandum of understanding where they acknowledge that certain things, like usually residential variances or setback variances. Aren't going to be a countywide impact, so those are considered exempt through that agreement. But when it's a non-residential one, that's not under the.
And then, the WAC?
Yes, just within the LWRP.
All right, and.
So if you would like me to be drafting a resolution.
I think that makes sense, because I think we know what we're going to be saying.
Yeah, so if you could just say for the record where you're calling on your.
All right, where I'm calling is that it's fine, that's my opinion. So I don't, for all you need to have some sign showing the daycare center at the site, it's a big site. And the sign to me, just in my aesthetic, doesn't seem offensive, seems appropriate for daycare. Nice break, sunny, says honeybee on it, so I have a problem with it. What about the rest of you?
Red, I'll turn your letter. I'd like to say something on that, the sign is, the sign is great. I find that the rest of the picture for a daycare center is depressing.
That's why you have this sunny yellow sign.
I don't know what else to say about that.
Yes, but the bright yellow sun sign brings a smile, it's basically leaving the scene.
A little bit like Little Orphaned Andy reminds me.
Do you want to start, or is the building?
Yeah. No, I mean, look what else.
Well, Richard, remember, you can character the neighborhood, you can ask someone to paint a different.
I don't think you want this, I think you want something the way it is.
The sign is, no, no, no. I just had to bring that out, I think other people saw it too. Yes, it is, sorry.
That's okay. All right, so that takes us to all the new applications.
Oh, the new applications?
Yeah. Okay, so now we're going on to the public hearing, the first public hearing, and I believe these are all continuations.
Uh, I think Mel, is Mel Rowland a continuationist?
I think it is.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I think they're all continuations.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
So the first one, oh, he's already out there, is the Travers matter. And I make a motion that we open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, the public hearing is open. Is there anybody here for the Christopher Travers matter?
Just before Jeff starts, just, so one of the reasons it was continued was that the planning board needed to do secret. Which they did on October 6th, and it's a night deck, so the ZBA can now, who focused their final determination. And the planning board had also asked that it be held open so that they can continue their review. They did update their referral comment and noted that they had no concerns for the ground.
And those are both by letters of October 6th?
I was at the, I think the letters were made on October 14th. It was, the action was taken at the.
Oh, yeah, I read it on 14th, you're right, October 6th and the top of 14th.
And just for the board's clarifications and for the public hearing notice, so the proposal hasn't changed, it's still going to be 80 feet from the road. When I reviewed the determination letter, I thought it was because the solar panels were in the front yard setback of 100 feet. It's actually because they're in front of the, they're accessory structures and they're in front of the house. So the variant, the project hasn't changed, the variance has increased because the house is so far back. And that's where you have to measure it from, you measure it from where the house is, you just hide it in the feet. So the variance is like 420 feet, but it's just because it's close, it's far away from the house, but the house is so far back. Just wanted to just clarify that for the record, the project hasn't changed at all.
Okay, and we did do a site visit last Saturday, and so much, that was, I think, noted in the resolution, proposed resolution. Kim, is there any reason that Jeff has to go through the same trapeze, like, wouldn't think so? Does anybody have any questions, concerns? To me, it made absolute sense where it was, and, you know, I love that berm in front, that berm in front just takes care of everything. Seemed to be the most sensible, sensible place to play.
Not only the berm, but all the brush, I mean, that's not even touched.
Yeah.
I mean, even when it loses its leaves, it's still going to be pretty full, it's going to be a wall there, so.
All righty, then I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we have to continue on with the public hearings, we have two more, but do, if you want to stay with the resolution.
I'm going to stay with one of the other, Roger.
Okay, thanks, all right. Okay, the next public hearing is case 1088, 34 Mill Road LLC. Is there somebody here for that? Come on up. And again, this is a continuation, so at this time, I'd make a motion that we open the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and again, we did a site inspection on Saturday, which was very interesting and very helpful, I thought. Is there anybody here for this application? I don't think so. Again, Kim, do you have a second?
Yes.
I don't see that there's really any need, I think the planning board were really the ones who wanted us to have a continuation.
The planning board had wanted to, as they continued their view, it's in front of the planning board currently, so they wanted to just get a greater grasp on their own review. And they did provide another letter, which stated that they thought that the.
It's positive.
It was positive, yeah.
Paragraph three, I think, is the thing.
Oh, I don't have it saved. But basically, what they had said was that regarding the variances, they didn't have the concerns for the variance, setbacks for the additions and the carport and the pool. I did speak to Melody Moore, though, did you change the, any changes to the pool that would affect the variances?
Doesn't affect the variance, it just moved it back to consideration of the roots of the tree.
Right, we talked about that at the end of Saturday. And the thing that stood out in the letter was just that it encourages the ZBA to consider the historic nature of the property as a contributing building that is listed on the National Register of Historic Places. And that has a sister property adjacent to the subject property. And that seems to be the real concern of the planning board, and it was a concern of mine as well, however, the site visit was extremely enlightening because. Were you able to find?
Yes, I'm sure. Oh, you know what, I probably have.
Well, anyway, just for the record, I know back in the past, maybe 10, 15 years ago, I don't know when. The sister property was before, it's for variances. I want to try to get that, dig that up, I don't know exactly what we gave, however, we were able to go out and meet up on their property. And then, for me, the most important thing was going next door to the sister property, and the sister property, and I took a bunch of photographs, which.
Yeah.
I've sent one or two successfully to Kim, I'll get the rest of them. But they show, yeah, for example, there, that's the sister property, and the sister property has been significantly modified. So that, to me, really has little of any historical value left. I mean, there's multiple additions. I know the dormer that you proposed was a subject to some controversy, the other place has two dormers, which aren't as nice. And so I guess I would be more concerned about the historic nature of the subject property if the sister property was, looked like it did in 1915. But it doesn't, it's, there's been additions, dormer, and this, that, and the other thing. So I just don't know that that's, to me, that's really not an argument.
I agree totally, if the sister property was not touched, then we would have something like this, you know, this is pretty similar. The whole, the dormer thing is just a matter of taste, I mean, I don't know.
Well, there wasn't a dormer on the original building, but now there's a dormer suggested here, but on the other one, there's two dormers, and I wish I was able to get all the photographs through.
Yeah, that's just a matter of taste, I. It's hard to compare them anymore, I mean, actually, you're complying more with the other property that was done 15, 20 years ago, in a way, so.
And I can.
You have a positive.
Yes.
The meeting's open, so you feel free to.
So I also want to say that this is a work in progress, and there are a lot of things, comments that we've taken. We haven't been depicted yet or drawn, but we heard the comments, and we actually were working on this historic renovation. We actually drew up the report for the Grazin estate, happened to be a former client of mine, so turned out well, and. So there are things that the comments that were made by the planning board are perfectly understandable, you know, working on things. It's going to work out, I think, you know, we're sensitive to their concerns as well.
I just hope, I know they did a site visit, right, the planning board was happy, and hopefully they went next door and saw. And hopefully, they went next door and saw what happened to the sister property.
We didn't actually go next door, but we, I think everybody was familiar with it. The other thing I want to comment on, I called the highway department to get their take on the potential to move that driveway further. I guess it's kind of east, right? And whether that's going to present a safety issue. We think it's, from a site point of view, would work really well as a straight shot into the carport. Our only concern was...
Well, there's a curve there.
Yes, so there's a curve, and there's a potential to do some trimming of some of the tree benches and some of the bushes that are closer to, on the neighbor's property, closer to the road. Maybe there's a sign that reduces the speed limit that says driveway. We could put a mirror across the street on the Grazmir property, so someone coming out would be able to see a car approaching the curb. So, that's something we're working on. Do we have a meeting set up? Next one.
I just have one more question.
Sure.
The side setbacks, this is 36, you have 36 feet on one side and 40 feet on another. Is that big enough to be able to access the property for any future needs? Like, anything to do with the pool or the septic or whatever?
Yes, so there's actually a fence which runs behind the private hedge that we have planned there. And where the fence stops at some point, and we have a six-foot gate to be able to take in either vehicles, lawnmowers, to access the rear of the property. There'd probably be one on each side, actually, which would allow, maybe a small truck or something.
Well, because if you've got your, you showed us the septic, it's in the rear of the property, so somebody's going to need to get in there and pump it out.
Yeah, depends a little bit on the length of the roads, too, but that's something we should consider, yeah. Where the truck is to park and... Actually, pull into the parking area back in there.
Kim, based upon your conversations with the planning board, and their company, or this closing the public hearing, as I am.
Yes, yep, yep. Again, I had a meeting with Melody Moore, the chairperson for the planning board, and I did ask her, based on the referral that you had received to the planning board, if they would let you over. And she said that was not in the sense.
Any other questions, concerns?
Sure.
So, at this time, I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, so the public hearing has been closed. We have 62 days to make a determination, but we don't do it in 62 days. We do it in 30-ish, we'll do it at the next meeting. So, I have a resolution ready by the meeting, whatever. You don't have to be here.
Okay.
If you have nothing better to do on Wednesday evening, you can sit here and listen to this.
That's good.
Right, but it'll also be put online, get yourself a board secretly.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Do you want to talk to us? I think I have to write that up.
I mean, I think we don't, so I haven't really...
I would give you those photographs.
Yeah, give those photographs.
I should buy, show them to you.
Yeah, and actually, I mean, it's good, if you can actually even submit them to direction, that way they're part of the record, that would be great. But yeah, if anybody has any further comments, I'm always happy to give further directions.
You know, I personally, I like the project. I didn't think about the historical nature of the situation until the planning board brought it up. It was great, we may have to think about that. But then again, you look at the sister property, which had totally changed. And this is going to be a very nice project. And there's no historical value to it with the property. It's been changed so much.
Correct.
Not even close.
And I think it was, so defer to my comments.
So, speaking of the sister, sorry, Richard.
Oh, and by the way, the sister owner, sister property owner submitted a positive, positive letter. And then I think we also got something from Mr. Meeks and Mr. Mrs. Meeks.
Yeah, they were the ones who had concern with the dormer.
Yeah, I mean, I think that might have been addressed more to the planning board, but still, you know, the dormer isn't really a variance requirement.
I think it's worth noting, too, that if you, because we saw the story of that property from inside, so you could change shifting the dormer to the back of the property, as Mr. Meeks suggested, require reconfiguring the entire upstairs of the property, because right now it's over the stairs and where the bathroom was and the eaves and...
Not only that.
There's an extension out there, too, so it couldn't be...
Generally, you put dormers where you can catch the most light, so it's on the southern side, so that's why it's there. So, putting it on the north side would be... And so, the thing that somebody, the concern that somebody on the planning board had about projects like this, that we have no affordable housing in mind, that kind of never went anywhere?
It was nonsensical to me.
Oh, okay. Me, too.
Oh, if you take this house, which needs a lot of work, and you put it back to where it looked like in 1915, if I get a call, you should cost you, you know, a million dollars, 500, except it didn't pick it up. But it's not going to be affordable.
That's right.
So, whether you put it back to 1915 or what is proposed, it's not... I didn't understand your opinion.
That's your problem. It's their problem.
Well, it's their property, that's one thing, but in no way, shape, or form would this ever be affordable.
This particular project.
Yeah.
And if it was some other 1,500 square foot.
Correct.
More modern house that was being bought, we turned it to something bigger. The thing that really struck me on our, on our visit is actually how modest the additions are. And the rooms are still very much in scale with the existing house. It's not like you've got this little thing and then this huge expansive addition behind it. It's all very much in scale. So, it's not a big addition. And because of the nature of age of the house and the materials used, any renovation of it would be a costly fortune.
It would be, if you could even do it, it would cost a fortune.
Yeah, well said.
So, you've been having a lot of discussions about what, the additions to the sister lot. And I know that you have visited the property during your site visit. Would you still, because I think Gretchen was looking into pulling some of those files. Do you still, are you still interested in looking at to see what the variance is?
With me, okay.
I can still pull at some of you guys' resolution from that, at least we had that.
Sure.
And that might set forth exactly what was up, because I presumed that everything that was added on to the sister property was part of that application.
And that's on partial access to what's been added.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I think it's very important to point that out, and that's cool, impressive. All righty, next and last public hearing is the Milbich matter, case number 1089. Come on up.
I'm bored. Just letting you read here late, so we just keep chatting. And I don't think, you know, there's no, you can ask the leader of the public.
I can ask if there's anyone from the public, you never know. No, there's nobody looking around.
Hiding behind the...
But the first thing I have to do, because this is a continuation of prior public hearings, I have to make a motion, there's three of us, I have to make a motion to open the public hearing. Do I have...
Yeah, I think you have to wait for Richard. Well, there you go. Oh, three, sorry, the five member board, sorry.
Step out some more.
You're cool with that? I mean, we got three, so we got four.
No, I'm sorry, yes, I miscounted.
I make a motion that we open up the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So, again, I think the planning board requested that we continue this.
Well, actually, for this one, the planning board had a finish-up seeker, which they did at the October 6th meeting, and we have their negative declaration, they did October 14th.
Yep.
So, with that, the ZBA can move forward with theirs. They had provided comments back at the September 15th meeting, which stated that they had no concerns.
See, it works.
Is that a joke? You tried your best. How'd she do?
I expect a little bar. That wasn't very nice. No, we just opened up the public hearing.
Okay.
And we, Kim noted that the planning board neged that, that's the event, so there's nobody here from the public. I don't know if there's anything to keep the public hearing open unless somebody does. We do the site visit, by the way.
So, I interrupted you. Did we open the public hearing?
It did.
Yeah.
And we had a site visit on Saturday. Listen, somebody has some questions, concerns?
No questions.
So, I make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. I guess that's not under old business. Do we have one or...
We'll put it under old business.
We'll put it under old, yeah.
I have a written one for Gretchen.
Do you? Okay, trying to see, Travers, at Dove's Nest, at Meek.
Oh, I don't have, I didn't make any changes to what was posted online, so that's why you don't have one.
I see. Okay, got you. All right. All right, well, that does it for all the public hearings, so now we have old business. And we should probably read the resolutions in order of people who are here. So, maybe we'll put Meek at the end and One Cliff at the end. And so, we can read the resolutions of folks who are actually here.
Is there a consideration of one?
Yes.
So, did you want to do, think on the agenda, Dove's Nest is first, and Mr. High...
Uh, yes, I can do Dove's Nest, and it's been posted, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So, I just, to, just to, so as I mentioned to the board, there was just a few changes I made after discussing with Scott yesterday, at the, our meeting. So, I just want to just bring those up to date for the rest of the board and for the public. It was just mostly adding a little bit of definition, so in section one, well, you'll be actually reading it.
Which one are we reading first?
Dove's Nest.
Dove's Nest, yeah.
I just added a little bit more detail, which essentially, we won't be reading section one anyway, you'll be reading it. But just about the screening.
Right, which to me, I mean, that was the most important thing, and screening was augmented to me for, back then, except some other pieces of, you know, having seasonal issues and stuff that you, uh, like, individually impact. So, all right, I just opened this one. This is the resolution of the Town of Ryanbeck's zoning board appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Dove's Nest, ZBA case number 1078. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and on reasoning described above as part of section one. The ZBA hereby grants the variances requested by the applicant, finding that they benefit to the applicant and are at risk of detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such agreement. The ZBA finds that the solar arrays are placed in the best location given site conditions and connection needs. While the system is...
Yeah.
Larger than what would be allowed and locally, located close to the property line, the proposed landscaping will screen the ground-mounted solar array from the nearby and adjacent properties. The matured black willis will be planted in our eccentric rows 270 feet. The Canadian hemlock and white pine are interspersed throughout the black willis to offer year-round screening, and the potential visual impacts are virtually eliminated. The arrays will cut the homeowners' energy use significantly, offering clear benefits with little impact on the neighborhood. Section two, the granting of these variances are expressly contingent upon the following. The property owner and all successors in ownership of the property must implement and maintain the landscaping plan. It is an express condition that all landscaping and screening must be maintained in good condition throughout the operating life of the ground-mounted solar energy system. This expressly includes the maintenance of all trees and shrubs and other screening mechanisms. All trees, plants, and vegetation shall be maintained in good health and in a condition that accomplishes screening year-round. Trees, shrubs, or vegetation that die or fall into poor health shall be replaced promptly by the property owner with new trees, shrubs, or vegetation that comply with the landscape and screening plan. Section three, the granting of these variances shall also be explicitly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryanbeck of any of these escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, Fee Reunification of the Town of Ryanbeck's zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until such, until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. And section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required firms and/or approvals. The proposed structures must be constructed in conformity with the application that they submitted. And finally, section five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within the form of a public's resolution. So, discussion. I, in particular, I like section two, which you did with that, talking about the maintenance. I, in the strongest terms, that this has to be maintained. And I think it will be, but I'm glad it's in there as vigorously as it is. That's my part. Anybody else?
Yeah, I don't agree with the resolution. I feel that with 60 acres to work with, to put the solar array right on the property line to their neighbors, I think they've chosen the easiest, the least expensive, and the least obtrusive spot on their 60 acres for them. So, I really think, I can't agree with this resolution.
Anybody else? All righty, then I'll make a motion that we approve the resolution as read with a couple of minor grammatical changes. Do I have a second?
Second.
And...
Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Nope.
Brian?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
All right. So, next is... Do you know who was next, next up? It's going to be, is it Travers?
Yeah, when I know that, that's all Travers.
All right, um, Travers was first on the public hearing, so we'll do Travers. I don't know that I was the only person on it. Yeah.
I can't remember.
There's Richard, there you go.
Oh, Richard, you're the only person on it.
So, again, just a few little edits, I think, from the posting. So, this is, again, just adding that the planning board on October 14th followed up their response by the request of variance based on significant planning or environmental concerns. I added that the public hearing was closed, updated the ZBA to Scott, Karen, and Richard, who were on the site visit, because I think it might have to be more on the site visits, correct? And I added a statement from my discussions with Scott on his observations of the site visit that said the proposed location for the ground-mounted solar arrays is well-hidden on the property. An existing ground conceals the location, and the solar arrays will not be visible to Route 308 or the surrounding areas. On the site visit, it was evident that the proposed locations...
On the site visit, it was evident that the proposed locations make the most logical sense for the placement of the solar arrays. Did that capture your observation, Scott?
Yes.
I also added in section B of the variances that, just a little clarification, that no additional tree removal is necessary for the installation of the ground-mounted solar. And I added that again in D. And that's it.
Okay, Richard?
And I'm reading now therefore be it resolved.
Yes.
Yep.
In the case of the ZVA case number 1085, in the variance application of Christopher Travers, now therefore be it resolved based on all of the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZVA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant finding that the benefit of the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or the community by such a grant. The solar energy system is placed in the most practical location on the property and will have minimal impact as no trees need to be removed or cleared for the installation of the ground-mounted solar. The system is well-screened by an existing vegetative berm along Route 308 and the ground-mounted solar will not be visible from Route 308 to the surrounding neighbors. It is located in a flat and clear area on the property preserving the character of the property and neighborhood. Section two, the granting of this variance is expressly contingent upon the following. The proposed arrays must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted, subject to any conditions placed on site, plan, or special use permit issued by the planning board. Section three, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, free reimbursement of the Town of Ryanbeck zoning law. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section four, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. Section five, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution.
Comments?
No.
Yeah, I mean, this didn't make sense.
Absolutely.
It wasn't, uh, it wasn't an issue, so. Do you want to make a motion?
So I'll make that motion to approve with those corrections that Kim talked about.
And I'll second it.
Scott?
Oh, okay, yes.
Richard?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Care?
Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. All right, and the last, next is Novick. Since you're here, we're gonna move you up. So come on, you can just stay right there. Let's put it. I don't know, do we know who the only person was on Novick?
Novick was Joe.
Novick was Joe. That means it's me. Well, you already did, yeah.
Because I was the only person on Joe's list, so I can find it.
I can't find it.
I didn't have, I think you have the whole, I think Gretchen provided even the old versions. I didn't make any changes to this one.
Right.
I don't have any on Abby's thing.
Maybe sent us previously. It was a day or two ago. But since there was no change.
Yes, you can, and I have a little printing, so you should have.
I'll win, huh?
No. The colored ones are the ones that I printed off. I think that, I think it's under, I think it's under this set.
Oh, under another patch.
And again, the only change I made was just saying that the public hearing was closed. And Scott, Richard, and Care were on the site visit. That was the only addition I made from what was posted.
This is your first point?
Second one.
Second one.
I know, freezing.
Who's writing, I'm on it or, you're reading?
Oh, I do.
Okay, so in matter of the area variance application of Auntie Ann Novick, ZVA case number 1089, report, now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZVA hereby grants these variances requested by the applicant finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant. Although the request seems numerous for the amount of area variances requested, the structures are all constructed in a reasonable manner that does not disrupt the character of the surrounding neighborhood. The structures are ordinary and reasonable accessory structures. They are well-screened and not visible from act of up road. Section two, the granting of these variances is expressly contingent upon the following and the following. The structures are already constructed and in place. Any changes or additions to such structures may require additional approval from the planning board and or the ZVA. Section three, the granting of these variances shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of the Town of Ryanbeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. And section five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution.
Comments?
Comments.
And it was, it was pretty, again, the second because it was excellent because we got to see where it was and it made sense and it's already existing and it's just, no one's gonna be able to see it, I don't think. Potentially, there may be one neighbor, but no one objected and.
It's just tucked away in a great little spot back there. And the way, it looked like someone's been there forever and it was all relatively new, as you just said. You know, we were walking the grounds and I was thinking to Scott, like, I don't know, what would you call it? And he said, you know, these things sprouted up and it's like, it's like organic. So it was, it was like you have an organic, it was a wonderful spot. And I think if your neighbors could come and visit, I think they'd like it.
Well, I think, I think your neighbors wanted to hang out in those hammocks, but we're busting here for them. Anyway, I know, it, it makes sense and it was kind of organic, it was kind of there, so. Any other comments?
My only other comment has to do in general with what size and constitution of structure it needs to be considered in matters like these because the woodshed, which seems like to be pretty ubiquitous in the rural community and the hoop garden, the fact that they need a variance to be in place strikes me as.
Well, just remember too, that the variances are for the entirety of the property and they're not for the individual structures, the aggregate of all of them together.
But.
That's what I'm saying, that they, they still need the variance because of the square footage.
Yeah, for the, for all, all.
But that we consider those, those structures in the calculation of the square footage, not in this project, but in general.
If it makes you feel any better, it was worse.
I know, I know.
The generator debacle with all that other stuff.
And did this all come about as far as, if I'm not mistaken, Brian looking at the pictures of Google Earth and saw all these spaces.
I think what happened was that they came in front of, they, well, they came for a subdivision. And I'd say that was what, because they had to put the existing conditions in then when Brian saw the structures. That's what prompted the question if they had all the necessary variances and approvals. But they had, the structures had received building permits and COs from a previous construction. So I don't think, I think that this was an honest mistake that just got caught and then, but now this variance is granted, everything will now be in conformity for them to continue with their subdivision.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we pass this resolution.
As read?
As read. Do I have a second?
A second. Gretchen?
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All righty, so we have two more left. We have Meek and we have Waincliff. And do we know who each point folks were?
Brian is on Meek and here is Waincliff.
Oh, wow.
What's that? I'm, I'm, where?
You're out of it and so am I. It's between Brian and Karen.
Resolution.
This is me, Greg.
If someone doesn't want to read, I don't mind reading. I'm gonna move.
So before we read Meek, again, this is one that I just made a few extra comments based on my conversation with Scott and this. Oh, I do have a question. Gretchen, tomorrow, could you get me when you sent it to WAC? I just needed to fill in that name.
Was it sent to C E P, too?
It's there, one of the, it was really for the WAC because it's not really, it's not.
No, I didn't, just, I was, because all the referrals you could go and say.
Yeah.
But I'll double check.
Yeah, if you, I, I assumed it was probably one of the planning board, but figured I'd do that. And again, I just updated who was on the site visit. And then I just added a statement that said, there are vegetated berms along Mill Road and the proposed shed will be screened by an existing berm. The shed will be minimally visible, if at all, visible from the. And I just added that statement in for the questions of an impact to the character of the berm. Saying that the berm will kind of screen and visible.
Yeah.
That's the Gary Meek?
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolution of the Town of Ryanbeck zoning board appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Gary, W. Gary Meek, ZVA case number 1086. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above, upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZVA hereby grants the variance requested by the applicant finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The ZVA finds that the requested variance for the shed location is reasonable due to the steep slopes at the rear of the property which limits alternative placement options. The flat suitable area will allow the shed to be naturally screened and remain consistent with nearby properties. Due to existing berms, the shed will be minimally visible, if at all, along Mill Road. Two, the granting of such this variance is expressly contingent upon the following. The proposed structure must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. Three, the granting of this variance shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits to do in connection with the application in full compliance with Article 14, free reimbursement of the Town of Ryanbeck zoning. This variance shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Four, the granting of this variance does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. And finally, section five, the area variance shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of the resolution. Comments?
I, I'm glad that we added the berm thing in because Mr. Meek, I think, didn't do himself a favor by suggesting that, well, first of all, the shed is beautiful. It's a very nice shed and he's saying, you know, basically, people going by, they'll like the shed, it'll look good and everything else. But no one's gonna see it because of where it is, you can tell. That, that berm actually, I don't know if it's a continuous thing that goes along Mill Road, but it's shielded in a bunch of different applications.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
There's a couple, there's a house making, the hot, the.
And then a pool they put in, yeah, somebody else.
And it's mothered down, just down the street. It's, it's gonna, especially, they're gonna be excavating probably a couple of feet down and with the vegetation. Maybe you see it, I think Karen was saying that maybe if you were really looking forward and you're going kind of eastbound, you might be able to see it. You're just not gonna see it.
No, I mean, and I looked at that as we were driving past it afterwards and you really, you'd have to, yeah, I think you'd have to be looking for it to catch a glimpse of it.
And, and the topography, I mean, really, that was pretty much the only place you could have it. The backyard just drops to the.
It's spectacular.
It is spectacular, Greg, yeah.
It's not as it has for children.
Any other comments? Motion, motion to approve ZVA case number 1086 with the modifications that Kim made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Care?
Yes.
Wanna take us out?
Yeah. And I just have a, let me just get the.
That was August 22nd.
Huh?
August 22nd.
Oh, thank you. I'll put that in right now.
Okay, so resolution, oh.
I just wanted to just go over some of the changes I made from what was posted.
Oh, got it.
Just gotta save this so I don't lose it. And.
The most recent one is the one with the yellow?
Yes, yes, the yellow. So again, very similar comments, I'm guessing, saying, you probably reported the same day, right? August 22nd?
Yes. Is it all in the same week?
Yeah. And again, I just updated an observation from the site visit which said that the current condition of the property is in need of some repair. The proposed project in addition of the carport will enhance the property and give a nice improvement to the area. Oh.
You didn't do that in the yellow, you just said it enhanced the property.
This is under section nine of this, of the section.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just had it.
I was just looking, no, it was all.
And again, I just made that same, kind of same, properties currently in need of repair is intentional.
Right, see it, right.
Okay. And then, Carrie, take it with the.
So the resolution, the Town of Ryanbeck zoning board of appeals in the matter of the area variance application of Waincliff 4 LLC, ZVA case 1087. Now therefore be resolved based on all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. The ZVA hereby grants the variances requested by the applicant finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The carport is reasonable and fits well with the existing structure and with the residential character of the neighborhood. The property is currently in need of repair. This addition will greatly enhance the property. The variances requested are minimal and consistent with the current property layout. Section two, the granting of these variances are expressly contingent upon the following. The proposed structure must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted. Section three, the granting of these variances shall also be expressly contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryanbeck of any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application in full compliance with Article 14, fee reimbursement of the Town of Ryanbeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. Section four, the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. And section five, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is commenced within one year of this resolution.
Comments? I knew it was comments. I, I guess my comment was, I was, and that's why, site visit's mere, just the most crucial thing of these applications. I, I could not believe the state of the house, you know, with the application. I'm shocked. I mean, the application showed something. And then we got there and I was like, whoa. And then we got there, and I was like, whoa, this is, this deteriorated, there was a monster tree in front of it. And anyway, the, what they wanted to do, rehab this house is wonderful. I'm sure the neighbors are very, very, very happy that the house was brought back to life and improved, but yeah, the state of the place was, I think we're all, three of us were shocked, whoa.
Just surprised, yeah. Because it, yeah, the tree, the tree that's clearly in the photo in the submission is, the tree is lying down in the front yard now, so...
But even if you go around the back and what have you, I mean, the, the state of disrepair is not reflected in the application photographs. So it's, it's great that this is back and make it look nice. It's a nice spot, yeah, it's a nice spot, yeah.
It doesn't change the overall look of the property generally either, so if character is based on existing, what's been there for thirty or forty years, then, then it's, you know, it, it'll be noticeable difference other than that it is in good shape. So.
Make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion that we...
That we approve the resolution.
That we approve the resolution for ZBAC case number ten eighty-seven. Changes?
Do you have a second?
With the changes made by... Do we have a second?
Second. Gretchen?
All right, Scott?
Yes.
Richard?
Okay.
Brian?
Yes.
And Karen?
Yes.
All right, gang, wow, that looks like, that's different.
Motion to adjourn.
And while we decide, Kim, anything that we should talk about, I think we've...
I don't think so.
So motion to adjourn.
We're dismissed.
I second that.
So move. All right, all in favor, aye.
All right, lights are on.